My name is Michael Henan and I just want to bring a few items before the council. I thank you so much for the time that you've given us to speak on this behalf. Number one, I think that this issue has been talked about enough. I think that there's some redundancy in terms of fair rights, the preservation of rights. I think that we're very clear on that, what is legal, what is not legal, and I don't think that anybody in this city really wants to violate anybody's rights or hurt anybody. So, I think that there's a certain redundancy to this law that makes it unnecessary and I think it's a waste of your time to have to deal with this every council or every other council meeting. Number two, I think the council needs to take into account that homosexuality, forgive me for those that are offended by this, but I'll explain myself in a minute, is a passing social phenomenon. The reason being, since the laws of nature preclude procreation among same-sex couples, their natural posterity is limited to one generation. These couples do not regenerate their numbers through natural sexual relationships with their covenant partners. Rather, through adoption and vitro fertilization, surrogates, et cetera, they must appeal to those of the opposite sex in order to enable procreation. In every case, they violate the sexual, moral, and relational covenants that they have with their same-sex partner and are dependent on the natural to circumvent the unnatural. In order to survive as a moment, they must coerce or inspire participation in proliferation of a lifestyle that most citizens cannot fully and confidently adopt. This places extraordinary and unnecessary social pressures on heterosexual citizens. Number three, integrity demands that justice, integrity demands justice, and justice always demands equity. If you establish this precedent for the LGBT special interest community, justice would equally demand that you would make the same concession to every interest group, a stance that is neither practical nor enforceable. Laws that are neither enforceable nor practical are purely political and seldom promote true justice. I have heard of people that, whose businesses have been, are suffering from LGBT boycotts. I ask myself, if that's the case, is this the behavior of those who have the best interests of their community in mind, or the behavior of those seeking to coerce the community to grant their special interest group extraordinary favor? Finally, transient influence. One further question merits, how many of those homosexual LGBT lobbyists are long-term citizens of Adair County? And how many of these who had had their social stamp on, who would leave their social stamp on our society are just passing through? It is my request that you would consider these items more carefully and that you would spend your effort on what I consider more socially responsible legislation, and that would be toward encouraging neighborliness and establishing wholesome family values. Thank you very much.
Hello, sirs. My name is Derek Benjamin. I'm a student here at Truman State University. I personally believe there's no redundancy to this bill. The state of Missouri currently has no protections for employment or housing, for sexual orientation or gender identity in any way whatsoever, except for people that are employed by our executive branch. Those are the only persons who are protected under the law for sexual orientation and gender identity. Seventeen states and the District of Columbia protect for housing and employment for sexual orientation and gender identity. That accounts for thirty-four percent of the United States and the states that make them up. According to July 1st, 2012, the United States Census Bureau population estimates, approximately 100 million, 105,246,730 people in the United States are already protected for their sexual orientation and gender identity with regards to housing and employment. That accounts for roughly 33.53 percent of the United States population. With regards to the state of Missouri, only counties and localities have passed protections for sexual orientation and gender identity with such issues. The state of Missouri has nothing in place. According to the same population estimates from the Census Bureau on July 1st of 2012, approximately 2,573,522 Missouri residents are protected. That makes up approximately 42.74 percent of the Missouri population. As you can see, unfortunately, the majority of citizens in our country are not protected for their sexual orientation and gender identity. And at this time, it is my opinion and the opinion of many of us in Kirksville, that it is time to add our population, our residents here, to these statistics. It is time to incorporate these protections for housing and employment into our city and to be a community that airs on the side of social progress. It is time to make my new home of Kirksville, Missouri, a place for all of us to feel comfortable, no matter if we have an apartment or if we're on campus, no matter what kind of job we're in, no matter who we are. We have the right and we have the desire to feel comfortable here in this community, and such an ordinance would do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm Martha Rau, and I'm here speaking for this ordinance. I think it's a positive step to move forward in Kirksville to have this ordinance there. I'm not going to go on any further, just please pass the ordinance.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is David Millian. I'm a United States Army veteran. I fought for the rights of everyone that is here, and I love everyone that's here. But I stand before you tonight to fight another battle, and that is the righteousness of God. Now, folks, beloved, you're the jury tonight. I understand and I respect you're the city council, but you're a jury tonight. Your decision tonight will affect the future of Kirksville, Missouri. Not only Kirksville, Missouri, but families of students everywhere you go, they go. I stand here tonight before you in battle for the righteousness of the word of God, and I will not back down for that. Because God is righteous, and God is not an unloving God. He's a forgiving God. But, folks, every one of us will stand to be judged one of these days. The decision this council, this jury makes tonight, you will face before a most holy God. And I ask that you stop this proposition, not this bill, in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ and the righteousness of God.
Leroy Alamein.
Did you sign?
I did. Thank you. Counsel, whenever a society agrees upon and establishes through consent, compromise, and constant use will ultimately define reality to them. And the question here tonight is, what reality do we want our heritage to have? I live here, I have children here, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren that live here in Kirksville, and frankly, I am concerned. This ordinance was planned and manipulated and instituted in other areas, as you have already heard, and it is a nationally organized group with a well-planned strategy to employ rules and regulations and restrictions that will infringe on our civil rights and our religious convictions. I do believe that there is also enough rules and regulations to protect all of our citizens. But this ordinance is, number one, a special interest group trying to impose their lifestyles on us and our children and our grandchildren. Two, it would require those of us with strong religious convictions and strong values of that system to make personal and business decisions out of fear and intimidation of rules and regulations and fines. It is also designed to soften up our attitude and acceptance of open homosexual behavior and eventually accept same-sex marriage. I believe this with all my heart. Homosexuality is a human right, but that right should not give them the power to impose their lifestyle and on us. So I urge you to respect the hometown values of residents of Kirksville and defeat this proposal.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name's Elijah Mitchell. I'd again like to thank the council for the opportunity to address the issue of this human rights proposition. Again, I ask you plainly to not pass or approve this proposition. I have several facts that make this faulty idea obsolete. An issue that concerned one of you on this council was the fear that to not pass this proposition would restrict influx of revenue and hurt business. Though your fear is common, it is factually wrong, unfounded, and unreasonable. Look at the presence of the investment of the dental college, and you can send those fears to the shredder. Also, my handout proves that Truman is among nationally recognized master universities, and out of a hundred holds the sixth place. It is also ranked first in our region. Again, let me remind you still more of this being the birthplace of osteopathic medicine by the reputable Andrew T. Still. These are all facts that encourage, not discourage business. To disregard these factual statements is to willfully seek dissension and despotism. By the way, I have a sibling who is gay. I support the freedom of choice, though not the choice itself. This does not equal hatred of them. It is not approving any form of discrimination against them. To think so is to be illogically biased. To say I'm discriminating because I don't agree with your view is not rational. By definition, that is discrimination itself. To say I can't disagree is tyranny. Now then, under Section 1032, the human rights officer shall, among many things, provide a forum for victims and have organizations provide assistance to get a resolution to an issue. From my experience, forums degenerate into gossip centers that violate confidentiality and breed hate. Be reminded, this officer is essentially a nobility title for a preferential class of people, of which and against, John Jay wrote, "Remembering the Many Instances in Which Governments Vested Solely in One Man Had Degenerated Into Tyrannies." James Madison's Federalist Paper #39 reads that there is an absolute prohibition of titles of nobility or preferential people class, both under federal and the state governments. This is indicated under Section 9 and 10 of our U.S. Constitution. To pass this ordinance is to not just make a blundering mistake, but it is a purposely belligerent act of treason against the Constitution of the United States of America enacted by our founding fathers. Remember their sacrifice. As a patriot, I thank you for your time and for your final decisive rejection. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Jeff DeShura, and I've always wanted to be a good public speaker, so I figured it was time to do that, right? That was the joke, but you're not supposed to laugh at this. You know, I just want to share a little story if I can. You know, I mean, first of all, thank you once again. You know, growing up as a kid, as a child, you want things, right? And then you're told by your authorities, or your parents, authoritative figures that are in your life, that you can't have them. And that can sometimes be taken as, well, you hate me because you're not giving me what I want. And so, what I really want to do here is, you know, I've been at every meeting. I've never heard one hateful word from anybody who has spoken out against this ordinance. So with that said, this is not a hate speech, or quote-unquote, "an unloving" speech. I want to make that very clear. I want to revisit my first comments that I gave to the council a few weeks ago. This has still brought more division than any good that I can ever see. And furthermore, as I talk to business owners throughout the community, I sense fear. Why are they not here? They're fearful. Flat out, simple. The majority of those businesses owners don't like the ordinance but are simply frightened to speak out for fear. If such ordinance is going to be passed, it needs to be unvoted, it needs to be voted on by the people. Put it on a ballot. Let everyone know about it, then everybody can vote on it. If it's that big of a deal, and, because this is going to affect everybody in our community, and so everybody needs to have a voice in it, not just five people. The First Amendment, let me read that. "To the United States Constitution prohibits the making of any law respecting and established, now, excuse me, an establishment of religion, embedding the free exercise of religion, abridging," excuse me if I'm literally incorrect there, "of the freedom of speech, infringing on the freedom of the press, interfering with the right to peaceably assemble or prohibiting the petitioning for the," excuse me, this is pretty, I'm kind of nervous being up here, "the petitioning for a governmental regus of grievances," excuse me for that. So, you know, the first sentence says it right there. "The United States Constitution prohibits the making of any law respecting an establishment of religion or freedom of speech." You know, I want to read 109, or 1039, "Discrimination in Public Accommodations." We read it earlier, for time's sake, I think I'm not going to get into it, but in it says gender identity, marital status.
Three minutes are up. Thank you. Truman State University, and I have several things to say about this ordinance. First of which, I mentioned this during the first night of the ordinance and the open forum, but it was in the design of the founding fathers of this nation to have a separation of church and state. I am not in any way taking the experiences of people who have spoken before me and used their religion as reason, I'm not diminishing them in any way, but I am merely stating that they did not want a church running our government. And I feel this is incredibly important when it comes to this ordinance, because people have come up here stating that they are against this ordinance because their religion tells them so. But, I do not think that this council can in good standing take those opinions into account considering they are based on religious opinions. They are based on religion. You do not serve a solely Christian audience. You serve Christians, Jews, atheists, Muslims. So, to just take one group and only think about their opinions, their choices, is completely unfair, and it does not sit well with a lot of people. Second which, I would like to state that imposition of homosexuality, you cannot impose gender identity or homosexuality onto any person. It is an innate characteristic that cannot be changed. Several psychology organizations have verified this. Exodus International, the largest ex-gay organization in the United States, which has recently closed its doors, stated, "We do not claim to change sexual orientation. We change sexual attraction." Meaning, it is an innate characteristic that cannot be changed. You cannot impose it on anyone, and no one in this room is trying to impose it on anyone here. We merely want equal rights. I would also like to say, this bill is not redundant. You can't say that putting equal rights is special interest group. We would be a special interest group if we already had those rights as everyone else here, and we do not have those rights, and we are asking for those rights. Which is interesting, because rights should not be voted on. Thank you very much.
A student at Truman State University, I would like everyone here, the council included, to realize that they have these rights. We are, we are not, every person who is here who is straight, who is cisgender, does not run the risk of being evicted or of losing their job. Therefore, it cannot be special treatment. It is not special treatment, and denying a group that does not qualify as straight or cisgender these rights is treating them as though they are inferior, not as a special rights group. I would also like to bring up, again, the separation of church and state. As someone who does not care to share my religion here, I find it so odd that the argument of God in the Bible is what is being used to stop this bill or to slow this bill down. God is not here right now with us to tell us his personal opinion, so we can't know what God thinks. What it does say in the Bible in a lot of places, though, is that we should love thy neighbor, and by not assume, and by not giving our neighbor the ability to live without fear of eviction, or have a job without fear of being fired, is flying in the face of other parts of the Bible. One fact, I did a lot of research before I came up here, and one very startling fact that I found in the San Francisco School District is that one in every three gay, bisexual, and lesbian students has attempted suicide. That is a very real fact. I can bring that in front of you and say, one in every three students who is bisexual, gay, or bi has attempted suicide, and one in every two trans students, whereas the normal number for high school students is one in 12. I worked as a tutor at Kirksville High School, and a number of times I heard the words "faggot" and "gay" thrown around in an incredibly negative and derogatory manner. That is a sign of such simple disrespect to this community, that I can only ask that you pass this ordinance as a very small step towards equality in Kirksville. Thank you.
I'm Boyd Halford. I spoke the last time, and you have a, you have an awesome responsibility tonight. Everybody's talking about rights, when the real question is being right. We want rights, but do we deserve them? Have we earned them? I lost some of my rights when I was 14 years old. I was raped, threatened my life. I saw a friend of mine taken out and backed by a gang of homosexuals and beat, almost beaten to death. I saw them beating, beating, and beating. I saw this over and over again. Talking about rights, and you want the special rights. Now, the thing that I'm really disturbed about, last Monday, the governor of California, Jerry Brown, signed a document that nearly seven million children can choose what gender they want to be, and a 17-year-old boy, or 16-year-old boy if he wants to, can walk into the high school and choose which bathroom he will use, starting the first Sunday, first Monday in January, the 1st of January, of two guys dressed in four months' wear. I was on a national radio television talk show the other day, last Tuesday. I was asked to be on with the lawyer out of California. He said, "Not only has California won this right," but he said, "The homosexuals right now are working to get Maryland next, the state of Maryland." The next is the state of Washington, and he said, "The state of Missouri is scheduled for no later than the last part of 2015 to have the same law that California has." Now, I want to ask you a question. If you saw your granddaughter and knew that your granddaughter was in a shower, and a 16-year-old boy walked in and said, "Hey, we'll take a shower with you," what would you do? I asked you, what would you do? I'll tell you what I would do. I'd die before I let him go in there. I mean, I'd die, brother. You hear me? I'd die, because that's infringing upon my daughter or my granddaughter's rights. You have no right, I don't care who says it is. You say, "Well, what are you going to do if you see your wife walk into a rest, a public lady's restroom, and that man says, 'I'm a lady,' he walks in there. I'd hate for him to walk in behind my wife. We'd have to call an ambulance because she'd tear him to pieces." I want to tell you something, Fred, we're facing a situation that is serious.
Your three minutes are up, sir.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
I'm David Garth, and I'd like to express some concerns that I have with the ordinance. Before I do, I would say that I do like this version of the ordinance better than previous versions, and with all due respect to the, all the work you put into making a version that's palatable for everyone, I would respectfully urge you to still vote no on the ordinance. My main objection is the human rights officer. The case has not really been made to me why this needs an officer. If discrimination is a real problem, why is a law not enough? Why do we need a law and an officer? We've had sexual orientation in the housing ordinance for four years now, and as it was pointed out, we only had one complaint in four years. So, if we add employment to that, do we expect a lot more complaints that would require a special officer for this? I'm not sure. My concern is that it may increase the number of complaints if we have an officer. I tried to find some data on the impact that a human rights officer might have on the number of complaints in a city, and I was unable to do that, unable to find anything, but I think that the data is out there, and I would urge the council to consider data to that effect before you implement, before you create this officer position. My concern is, as I read the language of the ordinance, the language is very, even though you cannot, the officer cannot solicit complaints, the language is very inviting for people to come and present complaints. It's almost as if it's saying, if you think, if you don't know whether or not you've been discriminated against, come to us and we can help you find out. And I think that the officer, I believe the officer would strive to be fair and impartial, but given the level of emotion surrounding this issue, I think that it's quite possible that an easily offended person could turn an offense into a charge of discrimination. And I'm concerned about small businesses, the effect that this could have. The only data that I could find is that the state Human Rights Commission website reported 1,361 employment discrimination complaints last year. That's about four complaints per day statewide. I don't know, is that a lot? I guess it depends on how you look at it. Albert Einstein once said, "Four hairs on your head is not a lot, but four hairs in your soup, that's a lot." And I have heard people say that we need to pass this ordinance, even if we think there's one person who has to live in fear of being fired for their sexual orientation. I think we shouldn't pass it in case there's one small business in town that might suffer from a false accusation. I think the impact of individuals not having this ordinance is more like, the impact on individuals of not having this ordinance would be more like four hairs on your head. I think that the impact on businesses of adopting it would be more like four hairs in your soup. And even if discrimination is discovered, I don't see what good this officer's going to do. If someone discriminates against me, I may feel better that a $200 fine is slapped against. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Roger Moore. Since 1982, I've been involved in counseling many families through difficult times. Also, since that time, I've been in the educational system as a teacher, as also as a school principal. I've been employed in Kirksville since 1998 and became a resident of Kirksville in 2006. I am asking that the city council to vote no on the amendment before us tonight. I believe the Section 10-39, "Discrimination in Public Accommodations prohibited," will mentally and psychologically affect innocent children. I also believe that this will open the door for the children of Kirksville to become prey to those who will use this ordinance to satisfy their own sexual appetites and fantasies in public accommodations. I ask you to vote no. Thank you.
My name's Derek Miller. Thank you, counsel.
I'm Mr. Hughes.
Yes, I'm already signed in. Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to step forward here and participate in this discussion. Basically, I have two issues, two concerns on the ordinance, the Human Rights Act ordinances. First and foremost, I've been in Kirksville since 1988, actually living here. I've been married with my wife for over 20 years, and the first thing that I would like to address is that I'm a father, and I have four children, and I am training my children in our house under godly principles. Now, that's a freedom of religion. We have that in this country. I can teach them the Bible. I can teach them moral values. I can teach them to love citizens beyond our family, not to discriminate against sexual preference, not to discriminate against color, race, creed. But I am concerned about this ordinance that's going to allow different sexual orientation individuals to go into public facilities that my children might be in. I have a problem with that. I don't want my daughters to be in a public restroom at the ball field or at the library and some man walk in, my young boys. Same scenario. I have a major concern, and I ask you to think about what passing this ordinance can do, not for just this generation, but for generations to come. There's more than one generation at stake here. Our children should not have to suffer for the decisions that could be made if you do. Our children should not have to suffer for the decisions that could be made if you do pass this. I implore you to not pass this ordinance for the fathers and mothers in this city that value family values. Now, the second thing that I want to address is that I'm a businessman. I own a business and I operate in Kirksville. I've done business here for over 25 years, 10 of which that I have established in the, the current business that I'm in. And I run my business with godly morals, godly values, integrity. Now, the thought of having to imply that I have to employ individuals that go against my beliefs, who's being discriminated against? Who's, who's, what's, where's the imposing coming upon? The small businessman? If I can't run my business how I want to, then I shouldn't have, I'm not going to have a business here. Guys, if you pass this law, you're going to lose revenue. I guarantee it. I guarantee it. So I implore you to vote no against this ordinance. Thank you.
I'm Xavier O'Brien. I'm a Truman student, but I'm also a lifelong resident of Kirksville, grew up here, and having lived here for many years, I can safely back up Ms. Bloom's previous speaker comments about a negative viewpoint of homosexuality in Kirksville schools and kind of in the community too. As a straight man, this ordinance would not directly affect me, but I have many LGBT friends, and putting aside any personal religious beliefs, I think everyone should be able to live life as they see fit, whether or not a religion says that it's correct by their laws. All U.S. citizens are guaranteed the pursuit of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And I believe that this ordinance would allow everyone to live their life as they see fit as guaranteed to it by the Constitution. Thank you.
My name is Linda Seidel. I've lived in Kirksville for 29 years. There's been a lot of talk about family values, and so I will speak to you as a mother. Um, my son grew up in Kirksville. He attended Kirksville High. He's gay. He never came out in Kirksville. He lives in Washington, D.C. now, where he practices as an attorney. Why did he never come out in Kirksville? He thought he might get beaten up, quite frankly. I realize that this ordinance is not going to keep all the members of our community safe, but it helps set a tone. It helps say that we believe that all our citizens belong here. I've been really disturbed this evening by the number of people using the, we think this and we don't want them to disrupt our morals. I like to say that my son is an ethical person. He has a sense of moral responsibility. LGBT people are not more likely to be sexual predators than straight people are. I would really like Kirksville to be welcoming of all its members and not force people out. Yes, we can make sure that LGBT people are transient because we can be so unwelcoming that they feel they cannot safely live here. Thank you.
This is Tony Fikas. It's good to see you. Good evening. You know, I, I was going to make my comments tonight about the amendment because we talked last time I was here about the public accommodation situation. I was hoping to see that that would get changed. I believe that it's a, the way it's written is going to cause a lot of problems in the community. Um, just the fact it's, it says, "Our free and equal, equal use of any public place." I mean, you talk about gender identity, if you look at the definition of that and fit those two together. Basically, uh, it's going to be a problem to the city, it's going to be a problem to public places, I mean, the school district is a public place as far as that goes. I mean, we have a lot of, the swimming pool would be a public place. And so, by, by the wording that you have, and I want to give you an article just to kind of, some people questioned would this cause a problem? I, I didn't do scientific research, so you can look at it yourself. I went out on the web, I just looked through news articles and searched things and found in places where there's been problems with the bathroom issues, sometimes they call this a bathroom ordinance, by the way, uh, some lawyers refer to that. When they have those problems and you go to those places that have human rights amendments or, or this, this term, public accommodation, you'll find that they have the same wording that you're getting ready to adopt. So it's kind of a, uh, you can do your own research, I mean, basically, you know, and I contacted a lawyer that deals with cases, that works with cities that have these situations and actually, actually represents people that, that want to oppose this situation. And so I think that you're going to find that if you institute this, you're going to have a lot of problems in this community and a lot of lawsuits over it, because nobody's going to live with, with what could come from that situation. So I, I encourage you to think about that. I encourage you to, I'll give you an article that kind of gives you some background to it, and, and it lists a lot of sources and references and things like that, so you can kind of get some idea that, uh, in the end, I just ask you, don't, don't pass this amendment tonight. Talk, talk, talk it through, take the time that you need, discuss it. Tonight, you were trying to adjust it right here, which is, I thought was, was admirable, and I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. And, uh, but I think that probably you needed a study session to have talked that through so you could probably come to a conclusion about what would be best in this situation. So don't give up on that. Do what's best for the city. Do, do what's best for the city. And I, I believe that you guys wouldn't really do that. I know that you took an oath, because I remember what that oath was like, and it says that you will, that you will not do things, I mean, you, you will protect the public safety of this place, right? You took that oath, every one of us did. I did that also. If you pass this, you are, you are violating the oath that, that you swore, that you would uphold. So I encourage you to think about that and, and read this article. Thank you very much.
Once again, I am thankful to the opportunity. I'd like to thank the council for allowing each and every one of us to address, once again, on this important issue. I am concerned about a lie that is circulating. Some are trying to make this an issue of hate versus love. You either love people and are accepting of them, or you fall into that hate category, but nothing could be further from the truth. As a believer and an American, I would like to think that I have the choice to associate with whoever, or, to associate with without everyone thinking that if I am not associating with them, then I'm hateful. No matter how many employees I have, I should be able to hire who I will have work for me or not work for me after it all, after all, the business does belong to me. Here's a case in point. If I love my wife and she says, honey, that woman is quotational and dangerous, don't spend time with her, it is not that my wife or myself hate the woman, it means that we love our relationship and are willing to protect it from that which could destroy our marriage. Sirs, I believe that there are many families that love God. I believe that I am one of them, and that God says that sin is harmful to me and my relationship with Him. So I wish to distance myself from sin and sinful behavior. I should be, it should be my right, um, out of love for my God, to depart, uh, and not have to hire or provide housing to those who the Bible says are clearly living a sinful lifestyle. Before anyone accuses me of picking on certain sinners, I do wish to keep, I do not wish to keep companies with liars, thieves, filthy mouths, or drunks, just to name a few. I desire to stay away from all sin, and I believe that I have and can love the sinner without having a close working relationship with them. My contact with these other sinners should be left to my relationship with God without others assuming that they are hated. I hope that all women think that I love my wife and not that I hate them because of my disassociation or, or my, the distance that I keep from them. I also hope that people will say that I love God because they see that I love people and the people of God and not, um, and, and the fact that I'm separating myself from sin. I also see that this is a violation of my First Amendment right in the, in the free exercise of my religion. Amendment one of the Constitution says, "Congress shall make no law respecting and establishing a religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof." The word of God is my sole source of authority for my life. In His word, God is very clear in both the Old and the New Testament, that sodomy is sin and a violation and perversion of that which God has designed and decreed.
Your three minutes are up. Thank you.
Hi. Yes, my name's Alan Thomas. Uh, I was not planning to speak tonight, so I don't have a prepared text. I apologize in advance if I'm at all halting, uh, but I've heard some things today that I feel need to be responded to. First of all, what the last man was saying about sin, and he won't engage in business with anyone who sins, I hope he's planning on checking out whether they're wearing multiple kinds of, of fabric together in the same, woven in the same clothing, or, uh, making sure that they don't mix meat and dairy products like cheese together. But, um, more seriously, I hear a number of people, if it had just been one, I would dismiss it, it's kind of older, you know, crank or something, but multiple people saying that they are afraid that this will now allow gay people to use the same restrooms that other people use. I wasn't aware that there was anywhere in the U.S. that gay people were not allowed to use public restrooms. So I'm not sure that they're really speaking to this ordinance, but perhaps they're implicitly arguing that we should add new laws, uh, perhaps putting, uh, some kind of badge on gay people, trying to find out who's gay and put badges on them so they're not allowed to use public restrooms. I think that sounds a little reminiscent of Nazi Germany, but hey, you know, I don't know, I guess that's, that would be an idea for some people. Otherwise, I don't know how they're intending to keep gay people out of the restrooms that they already go to, and also where they're expecting gay people to use the restroom if they're in public. Maybe they think that all gay people should be put in prison so that they won't have to be in public, or they should be confined to their homes, or I'm not really sure, but I'm really not at all clear on that logic, and it seems to have nothing to do with the, with the measure at hand, which I think is a great step forward for Kirksville and will signify to employers and to the world that this is a place of openness and not of closed-minded hatred. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Alina Cole, and, um, I'm a freshman at Truman, and I just came in a few days ago. Um, I'm going to make this very short. I barely know Kirksville because I just got here, but I've lived in Missouri all my life, and I know it has failed to protect LGBTQ individuals many times. I personally experienced discrimination in the workplace as an LGBTQ member, and I know how it feels. And I just wanted to say, I hope that Kirksville can become my and many others' welcoming home where we feel safe and free and loved. I just, I want to feel safe here, and I know that I can if you pass this bill. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, um, I'm Erin Schrader, and I hesitate to say that I am a Truman, Truman student because I also feel like I'm a member of this community for the four years that I'm here, as do many of us. Um, or Kirksville does have a lot of Truman students, and I think our opinion should be considered just as valid as anyone else's because we are part of this community and we both depend on each other, both people who've lived here their whole lives and people who are just here for four years or even longer. Um, I didn't prepare a speech, but I just wanted to, um, point out that what this ordinance does is it really just, um, the two main things is protects, um, the LGBT community and housing and employment. It does not say that you have to, like, invite them into your homes, um, let them hang out with your kids or anything. It just says that if you're a business owner, you can't discriminate against them. You also can't discriminate against people of other religions, so if that's, your issue is having to deal with people of different worlds and you, that's already a problem for you, and I don't think that this is any different. It's just protecting a group of people and really protecting all of us. So thank you all for your time.
My name is Kim Bailey, and I moved here to Kirksville, Missouri with my father in 1970. I graduated from the class of Kirksville High School in 1983, and I chose to move back here to put my children in our wonderful school system, and I can't remember, that was 1998, I think. And I want to talk a little bit about transients and our class of 1983. There were many members of that community, of that, sorry, I'm sorry, graduating class that have gone on to become lawyers and doctors, scholars, a lot of respected members came out of that class. And when I came back here in 1998, I found that most of them were gone, and that worries me. I mean, they're out there somewhere being positive, um, hardworking people, and I just wonder why didn't they come back? Is it because there aren't jobs here, or is it because of how the community, I don't treats people? And one of the things I want to talk about also is the disability accommodations. And with the way the, the national trend in aging, everything, I saw, I've seen apartments built, and maybe only four of those apartments would be handicapped accessible, and the rest have stairs on them. So I, I see there are, uh, looks like plans in the works for maybe some additional, uh, handicapped, accessible housing developed, and that's what I'm looking for because there aren't very many places in town that are. So, thank you.
I'm Dan Mandell. I've lived here 14 years now, Kirksville. Some of what I've heard today, uh, from some of the people who opposed this, uh, this measure reminds me very much of what was said against measures, uh, designed to improve racial equality, uh, in the United States in the 1950s and 1960s, that God was opposed for some reason to intermarriage between blacks and whites, and indeed, the laws reflected that for some time. It wasn't just interracial marriage, by the way. Uh, many people may have forgotten marriages between Jews and non-Jews were forbidden, and it was allowed under the law in 19, as late as the 1950s, to run ads saying, "Gentiles only need apply." That was legal, as my mother has told me, um, because that's my background. And I don't fear that anymore. And one reason I don't fear that anymore is because of measures like this that were passed that in some ways went along with and in some ways went ahead and helped out changing social and political standards. And this measure, I think, is one more step along the road, um, not towards Babylon, but towards a, a world in which people can get along. Having an officer who can hear and, uh, and can hear problems and deal with them is not a measure that's going to create problems for the city, it's going to be a measure that can stop things from becoming problems for the city. So I think this is a very good measure, and I hope the council will vote for it. Thank you.
And then, oof, it is nervous being up here. I'm a physician in the community. Um, I'm married, I have seven, I have a seven, I have a seven-month-old son. My wife and I are residents of Kirksville here. To be very brief, I ask you not to pass this amendment. Thank you very much for your time.
... university, and this is my third year living and working in Kirksville. Um, I've heard a lot of scare tactics related to the bathroom issues as far as the gender, um, gender identity issue goes, and I think that a lot of people are pushing this a lot further than it needs to go. Section 1039 relating to public accommodation does not permit the bathroom issues that we're talking about here. 12 cities in Missouri have already passed an ordinance like this, and I've been to them, and you've been to them. Kirkwood, Missouri, there's not chaos over ba-, bathrooms, you know? And some of you have probably used a bathroom that a transgendered person who maybe doesn't have the exact genitalia has used, and you don't know it. This isn't a way to get perverts access to your daughters or your sons in bathrooms, this is just a way to make people feel comfortable. And I don't know what your bathroom experiences are like, but usually, I'm not too up and close and personal with anybody, so. I firmly support that this ordinance is being, you know, considered even, and I'd like you to vote yes, because all of us have been rooting for you for such a long time. So, thank you.
I speak here tonight, my name is John Hanley. First of all, I want to say this, I have, I think I have lots of friends here on both sides, okay? Um, it's, it's not about that, it's not about one against the other, I'm not, I'm not here to speak about that. I am here to speak about maybe making an amendment to this thing. We talked about earlier that you would, um, you would not require businesses in Kirksville to, uh, install unisex bathrooms. Well, maybe that's the answer. Rather than having, rather than have my daughter and my son have to go into a bathroom, and I'm not, I'm not worried about anybody in Kirksville, but there are, there are pedophiles out there. There are people out there who take advantage of this situation. Those are the things I'm concerned about. So I'm not, so I'm not here, one side against the other. I'm worried about the people that, that will possibly take advantage of this situation, and that will happen, you know will happen, because that's the world that we're living in now. And so maybe we ought to amend this thing, maybe we ought to make the, require that businesses in Kirksville put a bathroom in for that. Now we're there, everybody have their own choice. Thank you.
Maybe we need to take a bathroom break now? Poor humor, I know. Some would say that to not pass this ordinance would result in people outside of Kirksville having an impression that we are not exclusionary. Actually, it seems to me that the people outside of Kirksville would seek to exclude, they seek to divide and smear our good reputation. they seek to divide and smear our good reputation and character. Having listened to discussions on both sides now for two sessions, I feel that what you need to do is to, is to go back and rewrite it so that, I think people on both sides have made good points, and if, if people on both sides have concerns, but I don't know that the, the current written ordinance, as it's written, is trying to be accommodating to both sides and both positions of that. So, I'd like to see you rewrite it, then I'd like to see you, then I'd like to see you put it up to vote for the, for the city of Kirksville. I think that, I think that if you ask the people of Kirksville if they'd like to vote on this, that they would, the most of them would say yes, and then, then we would know, I think we could get a good consensus of what Kirksville thinks about this, rather than the three people who are a majority of it. I have one, a couple more questions. If this fails tonight, when would you vote on it again? Were we able to ask questions? I think we're supposed to be able to ask questions, right? Said that, said that in my paper.
Sure, Dad. You have five minutes to talk, there's no question to answer during that. It's a talk.
It says questions, but anyway, if you don't wanna go by that. I just wanted to know, when would you vote on it again? I don't know why you had to vote on it so quickly after it was voted down last time. And if it's voted in this time, when would you allow a vote to vote it down? Would it be a time limit as to before it can be brought up again? I'd like to find that answer out. And also, I'm concerned about the standards of the, what do you call it, the Human Rights Officer, is that it, as title? What standards would he go by? Is it really spelled out, or is it just what he decides he wants to try to pursue? And it sounds pretty vague to me, not being an attorney, but I would think that, and I worry about the, how broad it could be, it's not when they, when they make objections and how it might turn out. Thank you.
I'm Melody Chambers, and with complete respect, I actually am very honored to stand before you and express my opinions as a member of this community. I've lived here, actually, since 1981, and I've been a working professional for most of those years as a part of this community. I'm a mother, so I'm standing before you as a mother as well, have three daughters. One of the things I've heard over and over this evening and in all the other sessions is about values and family values. I can't speak for every family here, but in my family, we've raised our daughters to treat other people the way that we wanna be treated. Golden rule that has always stood, you can be lots of things, but we expect you to be coming to others. And our daughters have lived by that, but they didn't always find that in this community. There are lots of people of faith in this room, on both sides of the issue, people that are in favor and people that are opposed. And faith is built upon believing in something that you can't necessarily see or touch. And I've heard people say that they don't believe discrimination happens in this community, and that there's not a reason for this ordinance, but I can tell you that the children of our, of this community do see it happening. They hear the words that were used from the individual who was a tutor in the Kirksville High School, hearing words that I won't even say, or that I would actually be very angry with my children if they used. My daughters have been offended by what they've heard others called and have stood up in those situations. I don't think discrimination in any form should be acceptable in this community. That's my value, that's the value of families in general, is to treat other people well. I would also like to say that I hope that you will listen to the young people who are very accepting and willing to look beyond differences and actually appreciate and value the things that we all bring to not only Kirksville but to the world. Please vote in favor of this ordinance. Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. It's nice to talk to you again. My name is Trey Alaming, and I just wanted to talk to you briefly about a news article that I just read about a week ago, about an ordinance like this that's very near us up in Grimes, Iowa, is where this happened. This is from kcci.com. The title of the article is "Central Iowa Wedding Venue Turns Away Same-Sex Couple." And I'll just, I just wanna read part of it, and I won't take up three minutes. It says, "After the hotel pate closed, an Iowa couple scrambled to find a new place for their wedding. They thought Gortas and Grimes was the place until they said the owners found out they were a same-sex couple." And so, they were turned away from this business because they were a same-sex couple. So, a lot of people say, "Well, that's, that's rude, and that's not cool." But here's what the owner said, "It's not from an angry place," said Betty Odegaard, owner of Gortas House. Odegaard said she is a Mennonite. She said telling Lee and Jared they would not be able to wed at the business she and her husband operate was to stand on religious principles. That decision is based on our religious beliefs, we want to honor that. We want people to know that it is our stand that comes from our faith, our convictions. I think we should just stand for that no matter what, said Odegaard. So, and so the article goes on, and the couple, one of the men in this couple, his name is Lee Stafford, and he said he is not convinced the decision is based on religion. And this is his quote, "The fact is he discriminated against us based on our sexual orientation. Iowa code says if you have a public accommodation, you can't discriminate based on sexual orientation," said Stafford. And the article goes on, and he talked about how they found another place, and they weren't gonna let it ruin their wedding, but then he said this, this is the last line of the article, "Stafford said he plans to pursue his case with the Iowa Civil Rights Commission." To me, the, one of the main issues that's before you tonight is can the government force people of religious faith to act contrary to their religious faith? This man in Iowa thinks so. Iowa state law says that they can. I would urge you to take the opposite stance, because this is another example of a law like this and how it's being applied. There's really no excuse for people being not cool to each other and being rude, but to force people to act contrary to their faith is also, it's really just against the Constitution. I don't think anybody, anybody here that, you know, there are people who oppose the ordinance, who are, who can be rude and say things that aren't right, and that's not cool, and I'm not for that, but I'm also not for you legislating other people's morality upon me. Thank you.
And I spoke to you last time, and I'm gonna keep it short this time. You guys, you guys represent all the people, and this, we got a cross-section here, as you can see. And from standing around there, I watch and I listen and I, and I hear what people had to say, I see, see body actions and stuff, and I know, I know we have different beliefs, but I wanna clarify something. First of all, the, the God thing, you know, you don't have to believe there's a God, a lot of people in here I know don't, a lot of people in here do. Each of those beliefs, when it comes down to each and individual person, is, is equal, supposed to be equal. You five people represent the whole town, you know, what your, your decision, I think Roger had a good point, I think that it's a big enough issue that maybe you should consider putting it up for a vote. There's a lot of people out here right now in this town that don't have any idea that we're, that we're here tonight talking about this. And if they did, they're not very well-versed on the issue. A lot of us here aren't as well-versed as we should be. But I, I for one, believe there's a God and He's watching over us, and He, and we all answer for, for what we do, and a lot of you don't agree with that, and that's fine. But, listen, you voted on it a month ago. My question, to clarify, and I know it says questions and comments, and it doesn't say that the questions are gonna get any answers, and I understand that, but in this, but in the sheet, it does say questions and comments, so you might ought to consider changing the wording if you don't want the questions. But, I'm speechless because the, the first guy, I forget, but he made the comment about redundancy. And I tell you what may be redundant is going through an hour and a half worth of comments when you've already voted for it, while, you know, you kinda misstepped a while ago, but I think a lot of minds are already made up, and I hope not. I hope that some people, what they've said here today has made some sense, and, and there's a lot of passion on both sides. As far as the bathroom issue, I don't, I have issues about the bathroom myself, but I only want them to use the right one. I don't, nobody's telling, clarifying, one boy was worried about what he had to use the bathroom at home, couldn't go, you know, when he went to town or something. You know, no, it's just use, use the right one, that's, that's all I care. But, you voted on it. My point was that you voted on it already a month ago, and here we are again. And we were taught, we were indoctrinated for a long time with no means no, you know, no means no, but it doesn't mean maybe, or yes, or, and if you push the issue, it can be termed as date rape, okay? That's kinda what I feel like is going on here. You guys voted, you, you said no, but here we are again, and you put the same dress back on the girl or guy, as the case may be, that you didn't want to date in the first place.
Thank you.
I'm Maglio, I'm fifteen years old, and I've lived here my entire life. I go to Kirksville High School. I am for this legislation being passed, because in the future, I, if I'm still living here, I don't want my children, if one of them may be gay or transgender or any of those, I don't want them to someday get a job and then be, and then not have them revoked from that job because of them being gay. And I, I'm Boy Scout, I believe in God, but I believe in rights of everyone and not just push, and I understand that the religious issue with this, but there's the First Amendment and separation between church and state, which I personally believe in. I didn't really come up here with a speech or anything planned, it took the top, top of my head, but what I was trying to say, I don't want in future generations to be turned away because of their sexual orientation or gender. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Andrew Fikus, and I'm a Truman student here in town, I'm going into my third year. I was also born and raised in this area, and I'm proud to call it home, and hope to live here for a long time. One of the things that I would just like to point out is you as City Council members are elected officials, and I really am happy to see a lot of voices here from Truman tonight for both sides. I'm really proud of Truman for speaking out, for students coming and speaking out, but I also think it's interesting that if you look at the last City Council elections we have, less than fifty people from Truman State vote for the City Council members. The voting turnout in our whole area is really low, I mean, it just is. But you as elected officials are representations of the area, of who we are. I was in the last study session from two weeks ago, and Councilman Moritz pointed out, correcting actually one of the other council members, who said there was not a very large population of people in support of this, and he said it was more like seventeen hundred people, not, not a hundred, as it was said. And by my count, that's still only ten percent. And so, you as representing body, I would think ninety percent of you vote for it and ten percent of you don't, if that's how we're seeing it. You are the representation of this city, and I'm not saying that you don't have to watch out for both sides and even the minorities, but I also say that you were voted for a reason into office. You were voted because people supported what you stand for and who you are, and I would say that you would stand by the city and the representation of the city, and if need be, put it to the vote for the people, so that they can make their voices heard. The people that voted you in can make their voices heard on this issue. I support you not passing this, but I also support the city, and I wanna see the best thing happen, so thank you for your time.
I'm Jeanette Shane, and I live in Kirksville. I haven't always lived in Kirksville, I grew up in Kentucky. And I do wanna say that a number of the things that I've heard tonight really remind me of unpleasant things that I heard when I was growing up. And you know, I'm kinda old, so growing up was a while ago. And some of the things I've heard sound awful lot like those things that I heard about race discrimination in Kentucky when I was growing up. That's the first thing I wanna say. I wanna address really briefly the bathroom issue. The bathroom issue to me is a non-issue. I, the, the reality is, I know it concerns people, but the reality is, even though I always go in the women's room, if I really, really have to go and somebody's been in there for an hour, I might well go to the men's bathroom, and there's nothing in the Constitution or the state statutes or anything that says that I can't. I don't wanna go in the men's bathroom, but if it's a choice between the floor and the bathroom, I'm gonna go in the men's bathroom. Finally, I wanna say something as a person of faith. There are numerous religions in this world, and I can speak to maybe the top seven. They all talk about love. That's the bottom line for all of those religions. And our three great Abrahamic religions, Judaism, Christianity, and Islam, all talk about bringing in the neighbor and welcoming the neighbor and giving our resources to each other so that we can all live in a good way, and so that we can all live peacefully. I ask you to remember that that's what we're about in this community, is trying to live together in a reasonable and healthy and loving way. Mr. Mayor and City Council members, thank you.
Hello again, Councilmembers. I'm Tim Mills. I've been up here about every council meeting on this issue, and I figure you know my name by now, but for everyone else here. This, this ordinance has already went through fourteen changes, and it, it worries me that what if this would have been passed fourteen changes ago? You know, what would that have done in impacting our city, impacting our citizens, impacting our jobs, impacting our people, you know, in this? You know, there has been cause that we needed to change fourteen times on this revision, so what makes it that this is the one? Is there a fifteenth one? Is there a twentieth one? Is it something that should just be dropped to the wayside? You know, that is a decision that you guys have to make as you come together. But what makes this the perfect one? That this is gonna make everyone happy, it's got the middle of the road, and those type of things. The, the concern I have is the word sexual orientation, it's come up numerous times. At the beginning, sexual orientation only included certain types of sexual orientation, but now, there's gonna be the MAP, the MAP, Minor Attracted People. This is a situation that they're dealing with in California right now as we speak. And the thing is, is there's a lot of PhDs, doctors, psychiatrists, psychologists, and everything else talking about that is a sexual orientation to let pedophiles, minor attracted people, to be included in sexual orientation. If this gets passed, and we have sexual orientation in this, and they do get that status of sexual orientation, you're also protecting pedophiles. That means that wherever this is at, they will be protected. They will be able to live across parks from children, they'll be able to get jobs in toy stores, they'll be able to get jobs in schools and daycares. You know, I have, I have children, you know? I don't want to find out that a pedophile was protected to get a job in, in her school. And the thing is, is wherever this is at, you'll be protecting these people too. Now, about jobs, you know, what if my child grows up and then becomes homosexual, and they may lose their job because they come out of the closet and say, "I am a homosexual," and they lose their job? What about my daughter that one day she grows up and she becomes pregnant, and she's fired because she got pregnant? This has happened in our town. Where are the protections for all the other people in here? To give one special interest group a right, you take the rights away from everyone else. What about the unattracted people that try to get a job at the local swim pool? The thing is, it's already been known that there's issues with that. But the thing is, is where's the protection for those that aren't as attractive as all of you guys up there? The thing is, is there's all these protections that need to be looked at, okay? And the thing is, is the Martin Luther King had made a statement, you know, you've heard a lot of the religious parts.
My name is Larissa Sullivan, and I'm a freshman at Truman this year. I personally value boundaries and structure, and that's why I appreciate our government and I appreciate you men and what we do here. But although I value the fire of young people and the ambition, I'm not so sure the overall representation is aimed at the good of the city. It seems to be more to bring a different cause across and fight for a different fire rather than something that's substantial and that's lasting. And I personally would like you guys to not pass this. Thank you.
My name's Emily Hinley, and there's been several things said about how kids in the c-. community have seen discrimination against homosexuals. And I've lived here since I was five, and I do go to a private school, but I have been in the community a lot. I've done volunteer work in the community, and I've never encountered this. I'm not saying that there's not, I'm sure some people have done this, but it doesn't seem to be a huge pressing issue among kids. Again, I, I go to a private school, so I'm not in the public school daily, but in my encounters, this has never been a huge issue. And then, the issues with, even with the bathroom, like, my dad was up here earlier, and he said something about how if a guy walked in after me, he'd be concerned. And honestly, as a 15-year-old girl, if I was in the bathroom and a man walked in, and I had no idea what he was doing there, I would lock myself in the stall and cry until he left. And I'm not saying that every man that would walk into the bathroom is going to come in to hurt me, but there are people that would do that, and I, I don't know why they're in there, I can't, I can't protect myself from that. And that's, that's something that we shouldn't put children my age through, and that's something I wouldn't want to go through, so I, I would want you to not pass this.
First of all, I'd just like to say that I wish I had the gall to claim that every law I disagree with somehow encourages pedophiles or rapists or, and first of all, like, gay people are not in general going to rape people and stuff, and I think that's, it's wrong that people are insinuating that. And secondly, I think it's a tremendous waste of talent that we're going to have a lot of people from Truman put off by the fact that we're not passing laws that would, you know, protect people. I think it's a huge waste of talent that a lot of Truman students are going to say that they don't want to live here after they graduate. Thanks.
Ladies and gentlemen, sorry to do my part to prolong this, but if this gets passed, this guy's not going to fall tomorrow. There are not going to be riots in the streets and people running in and out of bathrooms. But what will have happened is that the law will have enshrined a choice along with what cannot be helped. One cannot choose to express their race, or ancestry, or national origin. One can choose to express anti-sexual orientation traits. There's nobody in this room who can tell me that you cannot choose not to express it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm actually really kind of afraid to come up here today, only because I don't want people to think I am against anyone. I love people. It's what made me open up a business in Kirksville, to make everyone feel welcome and everyone feel loved. It hasn't put a dime in my pocket, I can testify to that. I did it because I love people. This is obviously a very big deal, and I would urge you not to vote on this until the ordinance is perfect. I do understand your motivation to protect people, and that can be commended, but I do have a few problems still with reading the new version that concern me. The first one is, do I still have the right to maintain in my establishment, if I grow to be more than five employees, a professional atmosphere? What I mean by that is, if an employee comes in with a, an illicit shirt on or something that I feel that could offend my customers or scare people, do I have the right to have them change? Because I don't see that addressed in the ordinance. I also have a concern that the human rights officer is not elected. If we elect the dog catcher, is not the human rights officer more important than the dog catcher? And therefore, shouldn't people vote for that person, so that injustices or tyranny or as things have come up, can't happen? And then, I do, it does intrigue me to let the people vote, because what does a town really think of this? And again, I do thank you for looking out for the good of all, and I understand why this is on the table. And again, I, I'm not against anyone. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Doug Davenport, and I've lived in the Derrick County for almost 19 years here, and I've loved every minute of it, and I've worked in Kirksville. And I just want to speak to this issue. I have friends, and good friends on both sides of this issue. I hope that after tonight, they, they will all still consider me their friend and colleague in many cases. I would like to speak to this on a couple of fronts. First of all, this proposed ordinance, as it currently reads, and it could be, I think, amended to, to address this, but is unconstitutional. First of all, it supersedes the statutory authority of municipalities in the state of Missouri by adding protected classes that currently do not exist in state law. Secondly, membership in the additional protected classes can only be determined by self-identification. And this means that anyone may choose to join this class and obtain special protections without the possibility of objective external verification. And this is patently unconstitutional, as vague and overbroad. Thirdly, it infringes upon the clearly articulated freedom of religious expression that all of us hold dear, and I am not going to quote the Bible or any other thing such as that may be, but I will say that this is a, an issue that does have foundations in the Constitution. It does so by making illegal the values and convictions of many groups and individuals, marginalizing those values, and prohibiting them from living them out in the public arena. As such, this ordinance would not make Kirksville more welcoming, but would rather impose the perspectives of one particular group upon everyone, invoke, and invoke the threat of government coercion. And this is true as it applies to individuals, first of all, but it's also true as it applies to profit-seeking corporations and business owners that hold religious values. The 10th Circuit Court, I might let you know, has recently ruled that laws shall not infringe upon the rights of expression for corporations, and this ordinance must cert, most certainly stands in opposition to that, to such expression. Second thing, as a former police officer, what I see is that this proposed ordinance is an enforcement nightmare. Unlike the vast majority of laws, this one is focused upon motive, why someone might do what they do. And determining motive rather than simply examining behavior is a challenging task, and one that often proves impossible in litigation and criminal prosecutions. The ordinance concentrates, secondly, responsibility for enforcement in the hands of a single person, which, that's a rather dangerous methodology. And then, thirdly, given the vagueness of the protected classes to be added, this individual will be placed in a very difficult position of making decisions where there's not necessarily objective evidence to be had. So this makes that a, a difficult thing in and of itself. Thirdly, this proposed ordinance will place undue burden and expense upon the city. The direct costs of enforcing this ordinance, I'm not clear what they are, I'm not sure that they can be calculated, but it could be significant, and I think that's something that needs to be considered, and that's both in terms of time and human resources. Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Brendan Eiger. I've spoken twice before, and I wasn't planning on speaking today, but listening to a lot of the arguments, it kind of got me riled up, and I've got no particular order of things to say, but I kind of wrote some stuff down, and I'm going to try and address a lot of issues really fast. So, they were talking, someone was talking earlier about how people can be employed, why, and it's infringing on their rights if we are a protected class, because, oh, I believe that this person shouldn't be allowed to be out in public, and therefore, I have the right to discriminate against them based on that characteristic. In the Mormon faith, and I'm not a Mormon, but this is for an example, in the Mormon faith, until very recently, blacks were not allowed to be in a position of power within the church. The reason for this is because they have a spiritually held belief that blacks were, I'm sorry, African-American men and women were born after having decided not to take part in the battle between good and evil. They can say, okay, they can say that, they have the right to believe that, but that does not give them the right, even though it's their spiritually held belief, that they can discriminate against people based on their color, the color of their skin. Sexuality is kind of like race in that you cannot choose it. Exodus International, someone already mentioned it, I'm not going to go into it, but no one, no one who is a professional believes that sexual orientation can be changed willingly. The Bible says, "Judge not lest ye be judged." I hear a lot of judgment coming from one side of this argument, and I don't think that it's fair for them to judge someone based on their sexual orientation, to say that they're a sinner, to say that they're a bad person, or that they're not worthy of being employed, or worthy of being in the same room as their daughter. I believe that this is a place of public accommodation, and, well, yes, this is a place of public accommodation. Anyway, there was a poll online taken on the Kirksville Daily Express where they took a vote for people who were for and against the ordinance, when some people were complaining that nothing had been done about having the people say anything. Well, we, the people for the ordinance won four to one, 80% to 20%, almost 1,000 people voted. There was one man, and I particularly want to say this, even if I run out of time while I'm saying it, but one of the men here was talking about how his friend was raped, or he was raped by gay men, and that's somehow based on their sexual orientation. Rape is about power, it is not about sexuality. My sexual orientation has no effect on whether or not I'm going to rape someone. But do you know what is real? The murder of LGBT individuals in the United States. Example one, Matthew Shepard, in the 1990s, Laramie, Wyoming, was tied to a fence post and beaten to death and left for dead.
That's your time, sir. Thank you.
I'm Amy Alaming, and I'm a fourth-year student at Truman State, and I've lived in Kirksville for 16 years. I would urge you to vote opposed to this ordinance. A lot of people have made a lot of good points on both sides of the issue, and I don't really wish to repeat any of the points that have been made. But what I would like to say is that people have raised a good point about many religions, including the Christian faith, being all about love, and, and that there are different interpretations of love, and that God is the God of love. And those are good points and beautiful points. But I, I don't think that this is the place to talk about that. We can debate the logic of the beliefs of people who are opposed to serving homosexual, homosexuals in their, or employing homosexuals. We can debate about how logical that is, but that is not for, that's not a political issue. The job of, of public officials is to protect everyone's rights, as you pointed out, sir. And if we can find a way to protect the rights of, of both the LGBTQ group and of business owners who do not, who don't feel that it is within their moral beliefs to comply with this, then, then I think that that would make everybody happy. But if we cannot do that, then one way or the other, we're going to be infringing on someone's rights. And I think that's an important thing to realize in considering this, that whether or not people agree about the morality of, of the issue, someone's rights are going to be infringed upon with this, the ordinance the way it is now.
Yes, Shipman. And I'll just come right out and say first that I, I would like to see you not pass this ordinance. But with that being said, I also believe very strongly that there shouldn't be anyone discriminated against. But I don't think like, by you voting no on this, means that we have the right to walk out and discriminate and bully other people. I don't think that Matthew Shepard deserved to be protected because he was a homosexual. He deserved to be protected because he was a human. We don't have the right to hurt people. We don't have the right to bully people. Whether or not this proposition is in place has nothing to do with the evil that's in people's heart, that would cause them to do such heinous acts.